Okay, this time I'll call the meeting to order. Everybody please stand and we'll do the pledge of allegiance. And I ask for Mayor Eric Wessler, ladies and gentlemen, Mayor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Present.
Rotello.
Here.
Ty Schultz.
While days grow colder and darker, we celebrate in our hearts the great gift of life to
Present.
Tumino.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. There being 20 present, one absent, and Councilman Perkins, I believe is at plan of working
our world.
tonight.
Tonight, as we deliberate to sale of city property for alternate uses, we pray for wisdom,
At this time, we'll receive their call of service.
good judgment, and prudence.
Mr. President.
As it is the season of Christmas, we recall the thoughts of another great leader who personified
Your Honor, at this time I'd like to make a motion for the return to service, as all members were duly served and aware of this meeting according to its statute.
concern for people. Mahatma Gandhi advised Americans celebrating the birth of Jesus to leap the way by devoting
The motion is made to accept the return of service.
the Christmas season to a real moral stop-taking and emphasizing consecration for the service
Second by Mr. -- Mrs. Ty Schultz in the corner, very quick tonight.
of mankind, for which Jesus lived and died.
Second by Mrs. Ty Schultz, any discussion about the return of -- you're a little slow
We must endeavor to express the divine in us.
tonight, Mrs. Ty Schultz.
It is with this emphasis on the needs of our elderly and the sick that we move forward
Any discussion about your return of servicing? Nonetheless, I'll try your minds also, favorably signify this by eye.
to consider this project tonight.
Aye.
The opposition, question has it carries unanimously.
With our servicemen and their families ever in our hearts and in our prayers, we begin.
At this -- Madam Clerk, out of one please.
Amen.
Thank you, uh, Councilman, the first please go.
Oh, excuse me.
Arcanti.
Excuse me.
Present.
The first 30 minutes of each council meeting reserved for public speaking.
Curran.
Here.
Dimicci.
I want to remind the members of the public, anybody that wishes to address the council
Here.
Riley.
Here.
must be a resident and/or taxpayer of the city of Danbury, and you must be addressing
Seaberry.
President.
Stanley.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
the council, but I don't know specifically on the agenda this evening.
Cola.
Here.
Negash.
Present.
But that is there any members of the public who wishes to speak to the council this evening?
Ellis.
Here.
Cabo.
Present.
Sadi.
Ms. Sarah Wessler.
Present.
Isconti.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Present.
Tommetta.
Here.
Knapp.
Here.
Mr. President, leaders, and members of the city council, good evening.
Nero.
Here.
Perkins.
On behalf of Mr. Jay Lent and Union Savings Bank Organization, we thank you for being here this evening, as we have worked diligently over the last several months. And, Mr. Mayor, we thank you, and we thank the members of the council for your work in bringing us to this point this evening with regard to this exciting plan. We believe that you will hear this evening from both the attorneys of the Office of Corporation Counsel and Mr. Ted Backer, that they are in agreement with the language that has been developed and that has been before you, for your hopefully favorable consideration of this proposal this evening. We can assure you that we will move with all due speed, as this year comes to a close, and as we are about to begin a new one, to ensure that we bring this project as it has been presented to you in supervision. We are prepared this evening to answer any questions that you may have pertaining to any particulars contained within this agreement of sale, and as a result, we stand ready to address those effectively, to hopefully prompt your favorable action this evening. Again, thanks.
Just here, I had just for the record, Ms. Sarah Wessler. Forgot the routine, didn't you? Didn't you? What?
Resident, taxpayer of the city of Danbury, also vice president of Union Savings Bank at 225 Main Street in the city of Danbury.
The annual address?
78 Stars Plain Road, Danbury, Connecticut.
Sorry, any other member of the public wish to address the council this evening?
Hi, I'm Lynn Waller, 83 Hadland Avenue, Danbury, Connecticut. I want to thank you all for getting to this point and for the cooperation I have seen from Union Savings. But I got ahold of a copy of the contract of sale, and it may be an old one, it may not have been updated, but it talks about when they're going to close, and that they are on page two, I think, online anyway. D, Connecticut Institute prior to closing, delivering the city of Danbury's planning site, and they're going to have 46 units, 28 one-bedroom, 18 two-bedroom, thank you for the two-bedroom units, and qualified health facility. I am really concerned with the paragraph on the next page that says the buyer shall have the right to waive any conditions or contingencies in this paragraph three at sole discretion, excepting approvals for the requirements obtained by the buyer relating to the State Bombing Commission. I am concerned whether this will stay or disappear. We have seen in the past some of the things that Mr. Muller, Representative Muller, has brought forth to the city, and it's taken quite a while to accomplish these things, and I don't want to see the senior housing fall onto the back burner. I also noticed in the paper today, and it could just be their writing, it says the institute officials hope to build a medical center as well as affordable housing for seniors and veterans. And I have a lot of hope, but I don't want to think that they do. What concerns me is if you take this out of the city's hands and we sell it to Union Savings, and I have no complaints about that, that will they carry through with the senior housing? And I couldn't find anything in here that forced the issue, and I'm really concerned once it's out of your hands, there'll be no way for us to force the issue, and it will just ride on the back burner and the senior housing will disappear. So keep that in mind as you're approving this. I don't know how you word something to get them to actually follow through, but I have a bad taste in my mouth after the Emmanuel Luthermin debacle consequently. Well, it is, it's been for years since we had said we were going to put the Head Start kids in there, and it hasn't happened. And I'm sorry, but I think that's wrong, and it's the same group of people that are saying they're going to build senior housing. So just please be careful with it and know that the seniors out here have a real need. So thank you very much.
Yeah, we'll make sure your answer questions are answered as far, the offending paragraph, that was going to be going.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Knight.
Good evening. My name is William Knight. I've been in this community, my name is William Knight, my address is 6 Cannon Drive, and I come to you, and I've been living in this community for almost all my life. But I come to you this evening with a few concerns, but I don't think those are concerns that we can all agree with. And I just want to applaud the effort that has been, has taken before us to this point with Union Savings and Mr. Muller on board with this project. I believe that this project will move forward. But my concern is that, in this climate, where, as we all know, that the politicians who are running for office are all talking about job, job, jobs. So I think with a project like this, I think if we put emphasis on keeping the dollars in Danbury by hiring local contractors, specifically minority contractors, black contractors, we could really make this project win-win for everyone. Thank you.
Mr. Knight, good thoughts. Any other members of the public who suggest the council? Seeing none then, we'll move forward at our D and S. I'm sorry, Mr. Muller? Sorry.
Thank you, Your Honor, ladies and gentlemen, members of the council. Thank you for taking the time to study this proposal and to be here tonight on a special evening. I want to thank you for the interest that everyone has shown in the project, and I just thought I would take a moment to respond a little bit to the two prior speakers. Mr. Knight was kind enough to call me today and tell me that he intended to make that presentation. I can't speak for Union Savings Bank, although I know they are very, very good corporate neighbors. I can speak for the Connecticut Institute, and of course, we have every interest and every intention of maximizing local participation in this project. The Connecticut Institute for Communities is a community development corporation. It's a nonprofit corporation precisely for the purpose of improving the communities in which we live, and we want to make sure that to the greatest extent possible, we use local folks, local labor, local contractors, and the like. In regard to Ms. Waller's comment, I would invite Lynn to call me when she has a concern like this, because I would have told her that Emmanuel Luthermin is not a project of the Connecticut Institute for Communities. It is a school construction project, and we have no control over that project. We helped get the money for the project, but it's not our project, it is a school construction project. That said, I would only close by saying that for everything we've done, for everything the Connecticut Institute has done, everything that I've done as a public official, living in the city of Danbury, 15 Worcester Heights, Danbury, Connecticut, I think we've moved all of our project tightly and to successful conclusion. And if you want to take a look at some of them, go downtown, take a look at the green, take a look at the garage, take a look at all kinds of things that we have successfully made sure happened here in the city of Danbury. So again, I congratulate and thank you for your hard work. We do hope, and again, Ms. Waller, that's my comment on hope, we can't guarantee, we hope that the city council will in fact approve this project tonight. If you do, we will build it, and they will come. Thank you very much.
And to go there. Any other members of the public wish to address the council this evening?
Margaret Mitchell, Park and Main Street, Danbury, Connecticut, I'm attached there. Choosing between having a medical clinic and senior housing and how much of each is like choosing between your two children, they're both so important to the community that it would be nice if everything could go through this plan, but it is just a plan. And so the one phrase that Mrs. Waller alluded to and the contingencies also bothered me, and we didn't read it together, but we took the same conclusion and wanted to find out more about what other law that phrase actually means, because 46 units of housing wasn't nearly as much as the senior citizens had hoped for, but granted, most of them have some kind of medical coverage now that they're seniors, and younger people are still being terribly impacted by being uninsured or whatever, and we hope that the new clinic can help with some of the other medical needs. And thank you very much for all the work you've done on this thing.
Any other members of the public wish to address the council this evening? Mr. Eric Wessler.
Thank you, Your Honor. In response to the comments of Mr. Knight, we too can represent, on behalf of Union Savings Bank, that we will certainly work to maximize and employ local contractors, as well as women and minority-owned businesses for this project.
Any other members of the public wish to address the council this evening? Seeing none then, we'll move on with the regularly scheduled meeting, or excuse me, the special meeting. I don't have any announcements tonight, so we'll go right into item one. Aside from the fact that it's Mr. Sadi's birthday and Mr. Seaberry's birthday tonight, so we appreciate it. Okay, Madam Clerk, out of one, please.
Contract for sale of surplus property for 6 Batten Street, 116 and 120 Main Street.
Madam Clerk, with your pleasure, council. Mr. Cavill.
I'd like to make a motion that we receive and approve per charter section 3-17, and having satisfied the contingencies set forth, the August 3, 2010 council meeting contract and sale of city property at 6 Batten Street, 116 Main Street, and 120 Main Street to Union Savings Bank.
Second by Mrs. Tommetta. At this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Backer and Mr. Yaman to give us a primer, a very brief primer, on the contents of the contract, and then if no objection from the council, we'll throw it up and discuss. Mr. Isconti is going to accuse himself, and let the record please reflect that.
For the record, my name is Ted Backer. I am a 25-year resident, a proud resident of the city of Danbury, and I practice law at Kramer &amp; Anderson, who has offices in Danbury, Milford, and parenthetically, in the holiday spirit. My son was a proud graduate of Rogers Park and Danbury High School. Happy that he did so.
I'm Robert Yaman, resident, lifelong resident, Danbury Corporation Council.
What we would both like to do is briefly summarize the contract and then take questions. So the contract price and the contract itself are based on that city of Danbury real estate law basic contract, which the real estate lawyers in Danbury have used, and the format is a format that Attorney Yaman had suggested. So a lot of the boilerplate in the agreement is the standard, the Danbury residential real estate housing boilerplate, and that has conditions in it for the title being okay when you sell it to us, in other words, you get good title. For informational purposes, we've already performed a title search, the title is fine, I've given Attorney Yaman a copy of the title search. Union Savings will be putting down a 1% deposit upon signing of the contract, and then seeking to fulfill the contingencies in the contract, which there are a number of them, and I would like to go through those, because those are really the heart of the contract, and they're very important from the city's perspective, and they're very important from Union Savings' perspective. And the first contingency is that the city and Union Savings obtain all the approvals that are necessary from the common council and other agencies, otherwise, obviously, the contract would not be consummated. The second contingency, Union Savings cannot acquire property of any sort without the permission of the State Banking Commission. So if the State Banking Commission, once this agreement is signed, presuming you approved the execution of it, if the State Banking Commission says, "No, we have to withdraw from the contract," so when this gets executed, we submit it to the State Banking Commission, we anticipate that they will approve it, so that should not be a difficult contingency, but it's a contingency nonetheless, that's extremely important, because nothing will happen without their approval. The next critical contingency is that Union Savings, and this is in paragraph 31, that Union Savings receive all municipal approvals to construct an approximately 2,500 square-foot bank branch on 116 Main Street and 6 Batten Street. So on those two parcels, remember, there are three parcels that are a part of this contract, on two of those parcels, Union Savings will be constructing its branch, bank building, and I think we do sort of see that over here, that's what we're talking about in terms of the zoning contingency for the Union Savings branch bank. And so let me emphasize one point about that. In a like in a regular real estate contract, we need to get all the plans and approvals, the planning commission approval and everything, before we would go ahead and purchase the property. So it will not be conveyed from the city to Union Savings until everything's approved. Another important contingency, less important for the city, but of very, of great significance to Union Savings Bank, and sort of sorry to mention this, but in other words, we have to make sure that the property environmentally is sound, in other words, that there's no leaking tanks under the ground, that there's no asbestos problem, that there's no, and if there is a problem, for example, a possible issue could be led in the basement of the police station from a fire range, we don't know, but we have, like any property you acquire, you send in an environmental consultant, they look at it, they do a report, we evaluate it, and provide it to the city, and so that is another contingency, but it's just for everyone's protection. In other words, if there was some grave environmental problem with the property, which we don't think there is, we would have to reconsider whether we would, you know, close title. But this is information that we share with the city, in other words. So that's another contingency. And then the contingency that everyone is concerned about, and I want to spend just a little bit more detail on it, is the contingency that the Connecticut Institute of Communities, Mr. Muller, obtain, first he has to deliver to the planning commission plans, site plan approval plans for the 120 Main Street property, in other words, the old police station, the actual old police station building. So what we're talking about there is that is 120 Main Street. So what are his obligations? In other words, his obligation is to develop a site plan, submit it to the city planning commission, and then the city planning commission must deliver before we close title, in other words, the properties don't shift over to Union Savings Bank, until the city planning commission delivers a favorable report on that site plan application, so that everyone in the city will know what is being proposed, in other words, when I say will know, the exact site plan of that project for 120 Main Street. So that is another contingency. And I wanted to address specifically Mrs. Waller's comments. So in the prior draft, we had put in a provision where we could waive certain contingencies, and what Attorney Yaman and I, in response to listening to everybody's comments, which are totally legitimate and apropos, Union Savings, in other words, and I'll summarize this, in other words, the property doesn't get transferred until everyone's happy with 120 Main Street. That's sort of the legal summary, but in specific, the legal language is, both the city and Union Savings can choose not to go forward on the whole deal, not just, not just the 120 Main Street, but on the whole package, if you are not satisfied with what is submitted to the planning commission and what the planning commission basically in their report approves. So it gives a fair balance to the entire agreement. And that's what Union Savings Bank wants also, in other words, they do not want to move forward with anything until everybody is satisfied. And so we deleted some things, we put some other items in, and that's sort of the heart of the contract. There are other standard provisions saying that there are no brokers involved, the taxes get apportioned upon closing, just like a regular real estate contract. You can have certain representations that are basically misnamed in the real estate contract. For example, you're not aware that there are any oil tanks on the property, but we have to check that. And other standard provisions, and at this point, I'd have Attorney Yaman fill in for these that I had for you.
Thank you, Ted. As Attorney Backer pointed out at the beginning of his briefing, we started out with the standard law in the rightful county in our real estate contract, in which I was the principal drafter, so I was familiar with this before we started off, and then we added at the outset, I added paragraphs 37 to 44, all of which are unique to this contract and transaction, all of which benefit and protect the city, if you go through them, you see that. Typically, in a commercial real estate contract and transaction, including one involving municipality, the contingencies, not surprisingly, favor the buyer. So we reversed that, I shouldn't say reversed that, we modified that, we balanced that, and that's not surprising in a typical transaction, because the buyers buying the property, they feel they need to be protected before they spend the money, so virtually all the contingencies in a typical commercial real estate contract, including municipal, one involving municipal, favor the buyer. In this case, we made virtually all of them mutual, especially with respect to the last few changes we made in response to specific comments from various council persons who had specific concerns. For example, we deleted the last sentence of paragraph 44, which stated that the bank was not making any guarantees as to its representations. As Attorney Backer just pointed out, we completely revised paragraph three such that either party can exercise a contingency there. So if we're not happy with the status or the progress or the results regarding 120 Main Street, we can terminate this contract. You know, in reality, what would happen in that situation would be, we would have the leverage to go back to Union Savings Bank and their partner and say, you know, we have the right to terminate this contract, but we'll not, we'll consider not terminating it if you do A, B, C, D, or whatever, we sit down and negotiate at that point. But in the last analysis, we could cancel or terminate whole contract and transaction if we couldn't come up with some solution. So we're pretty much fair to say we're as much in the driver's seat as the bank is. So, you know, it's pretty clear.
Closing date is?
What's that?
Closing date is?
The closing date is May 1st. May 1st, right. Which is a target date, but which we should be able to, should be able to achieve, depending on environmental due diligence and so forth, which they're going to expedite. You know, we're going to monitor that, we do.
Our intention is, as soon as the contract is signed, assuming your approval, we'll give our due diligence right away.
Again, you know, I have said, we addressed four or five very specific concerns, and I think actually some of those did address them, and I think they made the contract better, certainly from the city's perspective.
And some of that came through when you all got the contract last week. People called, the options and provisions of the D and I had concerns, we tried to respond to those provisions, we didn't want it to, but we're not just going into contract in front of you, we're trying to react to where your concerns were, so that we're all fairly comfortable. And again, as I mentioned, there's some very helpful thoughts that came through the council.
And I can attest to the fact that they made the contract better from our perspective, because, you know, I had a breath, I had a kicking, screaming to agree that some of those provisions, but we're happy with them.
Okay, with that, we'll throw it up and discuss that, council. Thank you, gentlemen. Questions from the council, are you ready? We're going to go down, sir, Mr. Sadi.
Thank you, Your Honor. Both the attorneys did a good job in summarizing the changes, and the issue of the contingencies was a significant concern to myself and several other council members. As you're explaining the way the contingencies were changed, and my limited familiarity with real estate contracts, it's almost unprecedented to give the seller the ability to pull the plug, and that's what I noted down here, that we are in that position, we can pull the plug, on private
the right to terminate this contract, but we'll consider not terminating it if you do A, B, C, D, or whatever, we sit down and negotiate at that point. But in the last analysis, we could cancel the whole contract and transaction if we couldn't come up with some solution. So we're pretty much, fair to say, we're as much in the driver's seat as the bank is. So, you know, it's pretty clear.
Closing date is?
What's that?
Closing date is?
May, the closing date is May 1st.
May 1st, right. Which is a target date, but which we should be able to, should be able to achieve, depending on due diligence, environmental due diligence and so forth, which they're going to expedite. You know, we're going to monitor that.
Right. Our intention is, as soon as the contract is signed, assuming your approval, we'll give our due diligence right away.
Again, the only upside, we addressed four or five very specific concerns, and I think actually some of those did address them, and I think they made the contract better, certainly from the city's perspective.
And some of that came through when you all got the contract last week. People called, the provisions of the area concerns, we tried to respond to those provisions. We didn't want to, but we're not just going into contract in front of you, we're trying to react to where your concerns were so that we're all fairly comfortable. And again, as Matt mentioned, there's some very helpful thoughts that came through.
And I can attest to the fact that they made the contract better from our perspective, because, you know, I had a dread of taking the screaming to agree that some of those provisions, but we're happy with them.
Okay, with that, we'll throw it out to the discussion, but, Council, thank you, Attorney.
Thank you.
Questions from the council, if anybody already working their way down, Senator Sadie, go for it.
Thank you, Your Honor. Both the attorneys did a good job in summarizing the changes. And the issue of the contingencies was a significant concern to myself and several of the council members. And as you're explaining, the way the contingencies were changed, and my limited familiarity with real estate contracts, it's almost unprecedented to give the seller the ability to pull the plug. And that's why I noted down here that we are in that position, we can pull the plug prior to closing if the plans don't comport with what we as council people wanted to see here. And covering ourselves from other issues where we haven't seen projects go to fruition within the parameters that we thought they would. Just want to confirm, the last sentence of paragraph 44 was removed, and that was a concern of not having a guarantee of buyer. And I know through the chair to either council, contingency is 3D. I want to confirm that was altered to remove the requirement that the plan be in compliance with the yet-to-be-published downtown Renaissance Task Force. That's correct?
Renaissance Task.
Right. That, the reference to the Renaissance Task Force was deleted. And then finally, the language regarding this, let's say the pull the plug or the ale safe option for the city, that's inserted in the last paragraph of 3D?
Yes, in other words, there's, there are a couple of paragraphs that are inserted, which specifically state that as to 120 Main Street, if it's not satisfactory, the city has a right to, you know, terminate based on the contingency not being fulfilled. And to get into the minor details, that you would give us that notice sort of as soon as you knew, so that we didn't get to the closing table, and then somebody say, oh, we don't really want to do that.
I'm not trying to correct.
Right, exactly, yeah.
And address the concerns I have, just going back when this project first came up, or at least when it was a publicly debated project, you know, it seems to have a good mix. It doesn't have everything that everybody wants, it doesn't have 100 units of senior and disabled housing, but 46 is a very good start, I think, in this area. In particular, to see that also qualified veterans, particularly the one veterans may be very appropriate for them, and they're one of the fastest-growing homeless sectors of our society, unfortunately. I had no other questions after those clarifications for now, Your Honor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sadie. Mr. Trumpett. I'm going to work my way down to him.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through the chair to corporation counsel, either again. In regards to the 3C under contingencies, if there is an environmental problem, I know that it's contingent on the buyer seeking the advice of any environmentalist, but if there is a problem, who's responsible to remedy that problem? Who would pay?
Well, we would be, because if there were a significant problem, that would be unearthed, no pun intended, during the due diligence process, they would come back to us and say, we're not buying the property unless you remedy the problem. So as a practical matter, we would be responsible for it.
Is that a negotiable point, or is that?
If I may. Sure. I sort of do a lot of this commercial work with environmental properties, and it is a negotiating point. What would happen, in fact, is depending on the degree of a problem, in other words, if it's moving, you know, three containers of old material out, and it's a diminutive amount of money, usually you don't even bring it up. If it's a huge problem, then the bank would say, wait a minute, we don't really want to purchase the property. Here's the information. If it's a problem that's solvable for a reasonable amount of money or some amount of money, usually the parties talk among themselves after the licensed environmental professionals who are the, you know, engineering and the scientific experts get together. But to answer your question specifically, it is a negotiated issue.
Mr. Ray, question?
Thank you, Your Honor. In a previous administration, I think Attorney Pinter may recall, we did remove all of the tanks that were located at 120 Main Street, also behind Sixth Baden Street. All remediation associated with those removals were completed, and completed satisfactorily whereby the properties were given a clean bill of health. Regarding any other potential issues within, contained within the 120 Main Street building, that obviously would be determined as part of the demolition activity. But as pertains to groundwater, soils, removal of any underground tanks, all of that would be on our head when we have the emergency.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you. Ms. Snell.
Thank you, Your Honor. When this first came to us, it was about the sale of surplus property, I had the privilege of chairing that committee, and I was able to speak here and understand what we were looking at, what we were looking to accomplish with the sale of this property. We really have an all-star team at Danburyans that we're working with here, so I know that, I haven't talked to several of my colleagues, it was some concern as to the ability for this project to be followed through to the degree that we're looking for. And I think that with all the contingencies and the stipulations that have been put in here, I'm comfortable that it is going to happen. I do have a question, just to clarify my own mind. I know in that first meeting, we had three different phases that we were going to walk through, was phase A, which was the bank, B was the medical center, C was the housing, senior housing. It's now my understanding, we have phase A and phase B being, B being combined, the senior housing and the, and the medical center. So that's question one, I just want to clarify that that is, it's an A and a B. And also, if for whatever reason we do run into a problem with, for sake of conversation, phase B, the whole deal falls through, is that correct? In other words, by, when the site plans are being submitted, the site plans that are being submitted are going to be for the medical center as well as the senior housing and the bank, or what are we looking at there?
Let me give a legal answer, and then I'm going to have Mr. Maloney give his answer. The way the contract was constructed, it's exactly as you said, an A and B. A being the Union Savings Bank branch, and B being 120 Main Street. Subsumed within B are two things, the medical center facility and the housing. There is no C, it's A. So that you have to see a site plan for the medical facility and the housing at the same time. In other words, and the whole thing doesn't close. In other words, Union Savings doesn't buy two of the three pieces, you know, unless you're happy with everything. And that's the balance. In other words, we, I'm not trying to speak for the bank, they can speak for themselves, but the concept was, this is a partnership, we want people to be happy with the whole product, to the extent that we can do that within the context of this contract. Obviously, and I have to state this for the record, obviously, Union Savings Bank, once it sells the property to Connecticut Institute for the Communities, and that's the 120 Main Street, we don't have control over them. But within the context of this contract, the submission of the actual plan to the planning commission, so you can see what's going to be proposed, that's all, as you stated it.
I'll let Jim, if you want, have another comment.
I just would restate the fundamental point, which is, yes, as a result of the committee meeting, we made a decision based on the feedback, that they would, we would not separate the development of the health center and the housing in two separate phases. We would go forward with both simultaneously. The only reason they were two phases to begin with is because the financing will be different. The available resources for the development of a health center are very different than the available resources for development of housing. Okay, two different pots of money, in effect. So that will still be the case, but it is our commitment to go forward with both parts of the 120 site simultaneously.
Thank you, Ms. Snell.
Thank you, Your Honor. Would it be okay if it was more project general than contract specific?
Sure. I think, we kind of over here, go ahead and ask your question.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. I took my first breath in Danbury, and I'm not going to take everybody all the way back there, because that was a long time ago. But as I watched this project unfold, and I was on the ad hoc with Councilman Yam, three people kind of stuck out in my mind, and two words kept coming back to me over and over again. And I think some two and a half months ago, as I said, Mr. Rizzo used the word vision. And he called us, he challenged us to be people of vision. And I've been thinking about that for the last couple of months. And my vision of the city is something where you have little squares and stores with boutiques and little clubs and that kind of thing, where family members, family comes together, and they become a family of community as opposed to individual families, where they get together at night and they start to exchange. But I see that as two or three or four little squares. But that vision, I don't think can ever happen without quality anchor projects. And when I see this, I keep thinking, this is a quality anchor project that will eventually spread. And perhaps other developers and other businessmen and businesswomen will see this as an opportunity to continue to develop, continue to develop downtown. The other comment came from Mr. Maloney, and that was mix. And I think that's a big word. I know it's 23 letters, but it's a big word, to make sure that the right mix comes together to make a project like this viable. And I kind of like the mix that I see here. And the other person, there are sort of three people and two words, but the other person was Mrs. Waller, and she stays on us to make sure that the senior housing units, wherever they're going to be, she stays on that. I hope you'll continue to stay on that, keep after us, keep it on the front burner. So those are just kind of the general comments that I see. And the Union Savings Bank team is just class act. So I'm looking, I'm really hoping that this project would go forward, because I think it can bring a lot into the city of Danbury. Thank you, Your Honor.
Mr. Nero, Mr. Otello, what's up? I'm going to get to Mrs. Teague.
Thanks, Your Honor. I'd like to, first off, echo Councilman Sadie's comments about the hard work the attorneys have put into this. As you know, we got this contract Wednesday evening, and started vetting it Thursday, and immediately found some issues that we had concerns about. Friday, of course, was City Hall's closed in the weekend, it's Saturday and Sunday, which brings us to today. So there has been a lot of time between the time we got the contract and voiced our concerns that we got the final revisions, which I probably picked up this evening at 5:00. Going back to the original motion that was made by Councilman Cobham, the president of the council, this is based on the July ad hoc, the motion essentially required the council to go forward with this project in accordance with the proposal before the ad hoc committee of July 21st. And that's a powerful statement, because as the attorneys, the real estate attorneys mentioned, most of the time when a seller disposes of property to a buyer, the seller wants one thing, and that's money. This is not the case of the city of Danbury. The city of Danbury wants something else entirely. This motion that President Cobham made could have said something very differently. He could have simply said, we motion that the council, through its attorneys, find the highest value for this property and be done with it. We could have gotten $2, $3, $4 million, who knows? Probably not, but we could have gone down that road. We know that things are tight in the city, in the state, clearly in the country, and we could have looked at that, but we didn't. We had a higher goal and a more complex goal in mind. And that was to see to fruition the petitioners' proposals for this property, which we feel are important to not only the parcel, but to the larger area, as has been mentioned this evening. And that doesn't include just a bank, it also includes Congressman Maloney's proposal, and the elderly housing, which I am happy to see has gone from an original unit number of the teens all the way up to something now in the mid-40s, and perhaps we can eke out another couple of units too. So the idea was to somehow inculcate that request that the council had into the contract. And we had found on Thursday that some of the language in the contract did not spell that out entirely in black and white. Now, I haven't seen the very final revision, I've seen a draft of the revision, but from what I've been told, and I would request that council reads the actual revision, because this contract that we have here is the one that was delivered Wednesday, not the amended contract. But before, at least I voted as I would like to have the new paragraph written into the record. But I just want to say that from what I've heard, my issues have been wholly satisfied. I am looking forward to a groundbreak in construction and to a downtown Renaissance. And I just want to commend all the parties, from the ad hoc, to the bank, Congressman Maloney, Anthony Rizzo, everybody who has shared any involvement in this project, and, you know, good luck on this, we need it, we want to see it, and let's go forward. Thank you.
We're just, we have the final language, we can read that paragraph in, I believe, Mr. Becker, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, hurry down, Ms. Snell.
I am, I am.
And then I think during the public hearing, Ms. Nuttall, can we make copies of that for the, so we can get it to you in writing?
Right, please.
Uh, Mrs. Teague. Sorry, Mrs. Teichels.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through the chair to Mr. Maloney. I just know that different funding has different timetables, and will your funding's timetable fall into the timetable of the contract?
Well, the good news I can report is that Friday, the bond commission did approve, the state bond commission did approve the first $600,000, which, and you made it read in the paper, there's some dispute about the bond commission's meeting and all of that, but we're pretty clear that we got six votes, which is a majority.
Six to, I checked.
Right, six to. The, which is a majority of bond commission. Some of the other matters may not have passed, but we believe ours did. And that will give us enough money both to serve as a down payment and to pay some of the development costs to get the ball rolling. So we're ready to move right away. Now, having said that, that gets us through the planning commission, through the closing of the property, okay? Then there will be a need for substantial additional money to both develop the health center and develop the housing. And as I was mentioning to Mr. Nero's comment, the sources of that funding is very different. Housing money is available through HUD, through the Department of Economic and Community Development. Health center money tends to be available through the Department of Health and Human Services, and at the state level through the Department of Social Services. So there are lots of more pieces of the puzzle to come together. But all I can tell you is that I know where all those pieces are, and just like I went after the money for the parking garage, or went after the money for the green, or went after the money for a dozen other things, we'll go after that money too. And I can't speak to the bank, but the bank said to me to mention this point, there are partners in this in a couple of ways. They're not just the intermediary in terms of the transaction, they've come to the table saying, we're with you, we're going to help you with this project and provide financial support for the project as well. So we believe, in good faith, I mean, that's all we can say, we're here in good faith, in good faith, we believe this is going to happen, we believe we know how to make it happen, we believe we have the first pieces of the puzzle already in place, and we're going to take it from here.
Sure, Mrs. Teichels.
But there isn't a date when your funding will expire. That, I guess that was my guess.
No, ma'am, there is no date which funding will expire, yes.
Mr. Rowley.
Thank you, Your Honor. And as we all know, these are very dire, economically stressed times, and I really truly feel that this project will eventually become a model for the rest of the state. My feelings as being at most of, in fact, of all the different meetings held here at City Hall, I can say that I'm extremely happy with the project. One has to just look at your senior housing, 44, 46 units, that's a win-win. If you take a look at your medical center, that in itself is a winner. But I think that we also have to consider the number of new hires that will be brought into the picture, so to speak. And you will eventually see that many of these new hires are on the upper level in terms of earning power. And consequently, these people will bring about a better cash flow for downtown Danbury, which is a positive thing, too. So I just wanted to say I'm extremely pleased, I'm extremely happy that after eight years on this esteemed council, I feel that all of you, Mayor Bowden and all my peers, and certainly anybody and everybody concerned with this project, you are to be praised immensely for your efforts. So I say to you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rowley. Any other discussions related to this? Mr. Cobham.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through the chair to Mr. Becker, Mr. Yemen. I heard Mr. Trumpett's concerns, and I just want to be clear for the record that if we were not selling this property, Union Savings, and it was contaminating, it would still be our responsibility.
Oh, absolutely. We own-
Oh, absolutely. We own the property right now. We don't, I mean, if there's something there we're not aware of, it's our problem.
But my law, we can't sell a piece of property that's contaminated, that we know is contaminated. You can't do anything to it.
That's correct. All representations in here are only to the best of our knowledge and belief. I also put a provision in here that they don't, they're not guarantees, and they don't survive the closing. But in general, I mean, in terms of environmental law, I mean, it's certainly our problem. So we're not, if anything, we're alleviating the problem because we have a buyer potentially...
Don't tell them that.
No, if it's a minor problem, we probably wouldn't even agree to remediate it. Don't tell them that.
It's a debate between us.
And if it's a major problem, it would be negotiated. But we'd at least have a partner. We'd be, not only would we know where, so we'd be better off than we are now, we'd have a partner that would at least potentially be able to share the cost with us. So, you know, that's not, and the environmental issue aren't negative. There really is positive in this context.
I would concord with the attorney.
Well, I would have to say that, you know, we've followed this very closely through, and I have to agree with Mr. Sadi and some of the other council people that are here with us tonight, that my concerns, Mr. Otello, my concerns have been mitigated. I have a problem with the same clause as Mrs. Waller, Mrs. Mitchell, and Mr. Sadi, and I think Mr. Otello, and probably most of us have, and it was removed. And I'm satisfied and happy to move forward here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cobham. Any other discussion? Seeing none, then let's try your minds. All in favor of the new contracts, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Before we hear that paragraph.
Oh. I have the votes. Now I got to read the paragraph. Okay. No, no, I'll read it. Go ahead. This is going to be the new... Yeah. This is, you don't have to put on a computer. It's an addition to paragraph 3D. And this sort of says who believes what. I summarized with you before. "In the event the contingencies set forth in paragraph 3A and 3D herein, as relates to the contingencies with respect to the site plan application for 120 Main Street parcel are not satisfied," and then here's the two words, "in the seller's sole and absolute discretion, then seller shall give written notice to buyer of the inability of the contingencies to be satisfied and specifying the contingency which will not be able to be satisfied, whereupon the seller shall return to buyer the deposit of $23,000, and this agreement shall enthe, no employee, neither party shall have rights against the other." And then it goes on further. It says, "seller shall notify buyer with respect to the here and above within 10 business days of the approval set forth in paragraph 3A and 3D having been obtained." And that goes to the point that I don't want to get to the closing table when everybody says, "Oh, you know, thanks a lot for my closing." Then there's a further, a further provision which balances this out. And that was an addition on the language which was in the contract, which basically indicates that Union Savings can waive any provision in the contract if it sees fit. Not waive any provision, waive any contingency of paragraph 3, as you spoke there. But then we added this language. It says, and I'm going to read the whole thing so everybody has the whole paragraph. And I'll tell you the new language and the old language. The old language is, "The buyer shall have the right to waive any condition or contingency in this paragraph 3," so on paragraph 3, "in sole discretion, excepting approvals that are required to be obtained by buyer relating to the state bank and commission approval." And then here's the new language. "And also accepting any waiver of the conditions under contingencies set forth in paragraph 3A and 3D herein as it relates to the site plan application for 120 Main Street parcel." And this is the big point. "Unless said waiver is mutually agreed upon by buyer and seller."
So what that means is...
I think we got it, Bob.
Oh, okay.
See it? So actually, I just want to congratulate Bob and Tyne on really tightening this thing up. And the council people who spent time calling and going through this with a fine-toothed comb, they made a better product. So congratulations to all of you. Okay, so we did the ayes. Are there any nays? Seeing none, then the motion carries 20 to 0. At this time, entertain motion to return. Second, Mr. Sadi, all favorite German.
Aye.
Return.
I'm going to read the legal notice. Actually, let's put this on the roll first.
Martin?
President.
Curry?
Here.
Teichus?
Here.
Riley?
Here.
Seaberry?
Stanley?
Here.
Taylor?
President.
Cola?
Here.
Asia?
President.
Callis?
Here.
Bravo?
President.
Sadi?
President.
Santi?
President.
Trumpetta?
President.
Bass?
Here.
Nero?
Here.
Genies?
Another commitment.
Otello?
Here.
Teichels?
President.
Camino?
Here.
With the record reflect that there are 19 members present. Mr. Perkins is working this evening, and Mr. Genies has responsibility and another commitment.
Mr. Seaberry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Seaberry has also left. I know he had a family commitment tonight.
Right there.
So there's 18 present. I'm sorry. I'm going to read the notice into the record. Notice hereby given that the City Council, the city of Danbury, will hold public hearings at which parties in interest and citizens will have an opportunity to be heard in relation to the following, copies of which are on file in the Legislative Assistance Office for Public Inspection. Item number one is change of fees, fire marshal code of ordinance 2nd section-833 and section 8-34. Item number two is easement extension Plum Trees Plaza. Said public hearing will be held on Monday, the 13th of December, 2010, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers, and I apologize for the delay. City Hall, 155 Deer Hill Avenue, Danbury, Connecticut, Route 6810. And I was tested by James Natalie, lit sign assistant. And just let the council know that on item number one, we will be having a committee of all immediately following the public hearing to discuss the action on the change of fees, fire marshal code of ordinance 8-33 and 8-34. As far as easement extension Plum Trees Plaza, that will be going to the January council meeting for discussion there. Okay. If there are any member of the public that wishes to address the council, I ask you, would you please come up to use microphone? Would you please state your name and give us your address, just for the record? Is there any member of the public that wishes to address the council on item number one, change of fees, fire marshal code of ordinance 8-33 and 8-34? Any member of the public wishing to address the council on change of fees, fire marshal code of ordinance? Any member of the public wishing to address the council on item number one, change of fees, fire marshal code of ordinance, section-833 and 8-34? Seeing none, we'll move to item number two. Is there any member of the public that wishes to address the council on item number two, easement extension Plum Trees Plaza?
Thank you very much, Mr. President and members of the common council. My name is Paul Jaber. I'm attorney at law at 148 Deer Hill Avenue, Danbury, and I represent the applicant Plum Trees Plaza LLC. The principals of the applicant are the Hawley family who are here with me this evening if there's any questions of them. I think it would be easier if I handed out a map of the, will show the request, and if you don't mind. This is a request for an easement to pass and repass over a 50-foot strip of land to the rear of premises known as Plum Trees Plaza. This 50-foot strip of land is parcel which is owned by the city, and the main portion of the parcel is owned by, is used for the public works facility on Newtown Road. The Plum Trees Plaza is located on the corner of Plum Trees Road and Newtown Road. It's where the Savings Bank of Danbury has a branch, Denny's Restaurant, and Boston Market. I hope you all know where it is. There's a small veterinary building in the, in front of it. The request again is to pass and repass, if you all have the map, over this 50-foot parcel, which is highlighted in dark black on the map. The parcel would be accessed from the entrance on Plum Trees Road, then behind what is Boston Market to the back of the building. The reason for this request is the Hawleys have a tenant by name of all these supermarkets. They're coming to Danbury. They're really just coming into this country from Europe. And they had the opportunity to lease some approximately 19,000 square feet of space, which is the center portion of the building. There are a number of vacancies in the building, and this would be very helpful for that center. Also, the grocery store would probably bring about 75 full and part-time jobs to Danbury. The reason we need the easement, and it's a condition of lease between Plum Trees and Aldi, is that they need this room for turnaround for their tractor trailer trucks. The trailers are approximately 70, 75 feet long, 67-foot trailer plus the cab that pulls it. The Hawleys would construct a loading dock, or two loading docks, on their portion of the property right behind the building. So the trucks would enter the site from Plum Trees Road, turn around, and then back up into these loading docks. So they need approximately 75 feet to do this. And that's the very specific condition that's in the lease with Aldi's, is that if we're able to get it, they'll go forward with the lease. If we're not able to get it, they won't go forward. We're not going to stop, I guess. I'm really almost finished.
I guess that tells us how COVID.
The easement itself, which has been reviewed by the Corporation Counsel's Office, is strictly a right to pass and repass. It has no right to build any structures on it, other than perhaps drainage structures, you know, underground drainage, which may be required by the engineering department. The property was appraised for $23,700, or the easement was appraised for $23,700, which the Hawleys are obviously willing to pay. And as I understand it, was reviewed by the assessors office and the finance director, which both had no problem with the pricing. Also, the request is received, the positive recommendation from the planning commission and the director of public, public works.
Thank you. Any questions? Usually at these sessions, we're just, we're here to just listen to you, and we'll take this up at the council meeting in January for a decision. So it won't just, it will just be discussed at the council meeting. It'll be on the January agenda. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other member of the public wishing to address the council on item one, or item two, I'm sorry? Any other member of the public wishing to address the council on item number two? Seeing none, I'll entertain motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Sadi, second by Mr. Otello. All those in favor closing the public hearing, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody have votes? Anybody have seen? Okay, ayes have. We're going to go right into the committee of the whole on code of ordinance section-833 and section 8-34. Under the third piece, by the way.
President.
Curry?
Here.
Teichus?
Here.
Riley?
Here.
Stanley?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Cola?
Here.
Asia?
President.
Callis?
Here.
Bravo?
President.
Sadi?
President.
Santi?
President.
Bass?
Here.
Nero?
Here.
Otello?
Here.
Teichels?
President. Camino?
Here.
With the record reflect 18 members present, and with the record also will reflect the same reasons for absence for Mr. Seaberry, Mr. Perkins, and Mr. Genies. Okay, clear. Council on item number one, or actually the item number one, the code of ordinance, fire marshals, section 8-33 and 8-34, what's your pleasure? Mr. Nagersohn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to recommend the adoption of the proposed amendments to code of ordinance section 8-33, fire marshal inspection fees, and the adoption of a new ordinance, section 8-34, fire marshal plan review fees, as proposed and recommended.
Motion's been made and seconded by Mr. Wisconsin. Under discussion. Mrs. Stanley?
Thank you, Mr. President. My question. The new ordinance, 8-34, fire marshal plan review fees. Were we doing plan review for free before? Was there no cost in it?
Mr. Johnson, please, could you step up the light? It's hard when people are hearing this from TV, especially that we can't hear, they can't see.
No, currently at this time, there's no for plan review. There's no charge. I believe from the previous ordinance, your site plan review, as far as actual construction documents, there's nothing.
So there's two reviews? There was a site plan review?
I'm sorry?
There was already a site plan review, and now this is a final review?
Correct. I'll wait a second. Site plan review, I believe, is 250 hours. And this is based on square footage now. And the reasoning behind it is a project comes in, we might do 6, 8, 10, 15, 20 hours worth of plan review. And of course, there's no charge for that. And then corrections are suggested or made, and we might get the same set of plans back two or three times, with two or three more hours added on to each before the final plan...
Can you just explain that to me? First, you ask for a site plan review, and that...
A site plan would be, is an example of the project that's going to happen on Main Street. We get a site plan.
Okay, right.
We check for fire department access, water supply, fire flow, that's the site plan. The next step is construction plans for each individual building that all need to be reviewed. So at this point in time, there's a charge through the permit center.
I'm talking about your department. I want to, I want to know through the fire department, are there any reviews done by your office, other than this new ordinance that's being...
I don't understand. I don't follow you. We do a site plan for any project.
And you're involved in that?
And we're involved in that. And we also review any construction that goes on, other than one or two family homes. We review every building plan that comes through the city.
My other question is, we have building up to fire alarm systems, fire sprinkler systems, and each part of that, there's an additional charge. That's already in there.
Correct. And it's all part of the review process.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll try your minds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll try your minds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Okay, guys, carry yours, so thank you. At this time, seeing no further minister, that can probably come before us, that will entertain a motion to adjourn after I say one thing. The New Engine 21 and the New Engine 22 are at headquarters. And before we break up from here, the chief has invited the council to the headquarters tonight to take a look at them. All of the members of the jury?
I believe that we need to set item two to the meeting next morning.
No, Mr. Turner, you missed it. The original motion was just to refer to public hearing. The original motion was just to refer to public hearing. Let me ask Mr. Pinder, I think all we did tonight was just satisfy the public hearing, the firemen, and I think the, Mr. Pinder, do you want to...
You know, we got a little confused the last time we did this, I was wondering if we need to recommend the council take it back or back up with the fees?
No, for the easements.
No, you don't need to recommend any back. They'll show up on the January agenda as a standstill on that.
We made a motion to adjourn, Mr. Turner. Seconded by Mr. Nero. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining?
I'd like to all to come on down to the firehouse.